Well, let's get back to my covenants. You were on roll, so I didn't stop.
Oh, I'm sorry. I get that way sometimes. Rick usually kicks me.
So you've mentioned you denied six was the number you threw out to people who wanted to build up there. To my knowledge, there's a house up there now that doesn't meet covenants. How'd that get approved?
That's not true. There is no house up there that does not meet covenants.
Nothing as far as stone on the front.
Okay, this, that is, now, it does say in the, in the covenants that fifty percent stone or brick, but it also says in the covenants that we have sole control. One of the innovative things that we did in our initial, and it's in, it's in title. Greg, you might be able to tell me where that is? I can't remember. But it's in the, it's in there that we have control of the architecture that goes up there. One of the innovative things that we decided when we put this whole thing together is that we didn't want the same kind of houses that all up and down the street like we have everywhere else in this town. That was part of the innovation. We could approve as developers the plan as long as it meets the criteria of the covenants meaning size and so on and so forth. But architecturally, we can choose. Now, the one house that you're talking about there that doesn't have brick or stone on it is a Cape Cod design out of the back east, and those people do not want it because it doesn't fit the criteria of that type of architecture. But that house is a beautiful home, and it's way beyond the size limits that that covenants allow. So yes, as a developer, we, as developers, we approve that. And if, if somebody came up there with a, a log home, if somebody came up there with a contemporary box looking square thing that Eric likes, we would, we would approve it if it didn't have stone on it because of the design architecturally that it is. Because that's what, I'm sorry, Eric. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to accomplish up there. So it wasn't that we were giving some kind of a, um, leniency to somebody up there. It was because it fit, it fit the criteria. So, and that is in the covenants.
Did you have any conflict of interest in that?
Uh, no. I didn't have any conflict.
You did build the house.
I did build the house.
Okay.
Do you have conflict of interest sitting here because you live up there? Just to say. I'm, I'm gonna say this to you guys, um...
Okay, one second here. Just, I know you're getting excited, but I just need you to kind of calm down a little bit. And just to be clear, we did, we have discussed this with the city attorney, and the only conflicts of interest that would exist for a council person would be if there's a financial contract that would be at stake. So the council member would be awarded a contract that would have monetary value. Then that would be a conflict.
I apologize.
Just wanted to clarify that.
But as far as that goes, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, first of all, we have five members of, and we had six before Wayne passed away, when that current thing. And all five members have a choice in that. But whether it be a conflict of interest or not, it was a design criteria that meets our covenants. So it means absolutely nothing whether I had a hand in building that home or not. It means nothing. And, and I just don't appreciate being, standing up here and being called a, some kind of a liar because I built the house. That's not the case. Okay? It meets the covenant criteria. If that house did not meet the criteria, it would have been disapproved certainly by Eric. Okay? So it's not just I, it's six members, now five, because of course Wayne passed away. To answer your question.
Carl. So with the covenants, I was just going through the subdivision agreement. Do you have a current copy filed with this plat?
Not with this one, but we will. Until this is approved, we're not spending any money on our, our tourney. But yeah, it's gonna be exactly the same as first and, and second. The only changes that were ever made to the, to the covenants was, um, no subdivision of lots after purchased by another party. Lot splits. No, no lot splits.
Carl, just to me ask that?
I'd say, and then the only other one was with the homeowners association. And it's been created on the other ones. I'm assuming it's, assume that it's gonna be adopted by the homeowners association for this new subdivision.
Every single person that moves up there is under the regulations of the covenants and the homeowners association.
It is one HOA.
The question is, are you gonna create a, a new HOA specifically for this division? Or are you gonna amend the existing covenants to tie this?
No, we're gonna, it'll be a new one that we'll put forth. To include, it will be, actually, it might be just an amendment. Didn't we just include it?
Eric might be able to shed some light.
Eric Kelly, ten forty-eight North First Street. Existing HOA is up there, um, phase one. It included phase two then at that time. Now we'll include phase four. So there's just one HOA. They're all the same covenants.
Right. We would, we're not changing that.
You're gonna have to obtain an amendment to your covenants to bring in this new subdivision. Has that, has that been approved yet? You're gonna wait till?
We have to wait till approval here. And the covenants are not requirement of the city. You don't need covenants.
Well, our subdivision agreement is requiring it. So I think the way I read it is the council will take action to approve the final plat. And before we actually file it on record, we'll need to see the new covenants.
And that's what we have done as a pastor.
Yeah, so that, that was my next question. So thank you.
Just wanna make sure procedurally everyone understands where we're at, so.
Well, so I guess my concern this time is I almost wanna make a motion just to table this ordinance based on what we heard from the people in the HOA with their concerns on phase two, phase three. And I think one of the things that then looking into this, you know, the, the turnaround and looking through the code, that's actually in there for the ordinance, for the, you know, the development of the land ordinance. So, you know, for an example, there are, there's exceptions with waivers as in the sub-agreement, you know, note five for sidewalks. You know, it explicitly states that the, the required development for sidewalks is waived until such time when the succeeding property owners dedicate the streets to the public. So that's one violation that I have. So I, I'm, at this time, I just think there's a lot of questions, let alone without the filing of the homeowners association bylaws and then the covenants, you know, filed with this. I think for the time being, I wanna make them, I don't wanna kill the discussion here, but I think I wanna make a motion just to table this ordinance just based on the homeowner's concerns, them still having time to get it into writing with, web, between the two. And then we can also address, you know, some of these findings that had, that didn't follow the ordinance.
Okay, so just so procedurally, we do have a motion to table and have some of these issues resolved, and then is there a second, I guess?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And we can continue the discussion and see where we end up before we take a vote on that. So did you want any other discussion this time?
Well, yeah, I'm fine with more discussion. And maybe even further on, we can address the issues that I've come up with on here just to get them out, and maybe we'll find sufficient resolutions to them before, and we can, don't even have to go through with the motion.
We are, the public comment is still open, but I was including them in the public comment. So before we would move on, we would, I would close the public comment. But I just need another hand or two, so we'll, I'll get to you here at some point.
I would like to make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the things that is very vital to this development or any development is scheduling. We're currently scheduled. So waiting a month diminishes that scheduling horribly. And so what that does is it puts this development, who knows when? The proper time to be doing a development like this is during the summertime. And that's kind of currently what we have. I will, without a doubt, within the next day, we will put forth a letter to the association. The problem that the HOA has is that it's hard for them to all get together at the right time, and so it makes it difficult. So we could be talking about, who knows when, for this particular situation. So I would just ask that we don't table this tonight with the promise that, you know, tomorrow or whatever, we have some sort of documentation in regards to taking care of the street.
Or add that as a stipulation to the ordinance, that that go forth with the HOA and web development.
Could you do that, Mayor?
You know, I'll make this comment to you guys. You know, tabling it is two weeks when it will be back here. If we try to pass this ordinance and we don't get a vote to suspend a statutory rule, now you're looking at three readings. You are now looking at May before it would be approved.
It would not happen this year. It would not hap, we, we could not do this.
So two weeks, you can't do this.
Two weeks, but if it went through three readings again, it...
That's why I'm suggesting to you, you let it be tabled rather than try to pass an ordinance where we have to all agree that we're gonna pass this ordinance and suspend the rules. If we do not suspend the rules, now it goes through three readings.
You can actually, you can suspend the rules at the second reading.
At the second reading.
Yes. So it's, it's, it matter of procedure here. You can table the next meeting where you can, you can read it for the first time tonight, not suspend the three reading rule and have it, and then you can vote, take action on it the next meeting, waive the three reading rule. Have it at the second meeting. You can suspend that statutory rule on any...
So I was gone last meeting. We had a, we had an item that got suspended. Did we not vote to suspend? Or nobody brought it up at the last meeting?
Yeah.
It went to a second. Nobody seconded it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, he seconded it.
There weren't enough votes.
That's right, that's right. That is a super, right? Just to clarify though, if you do want changes to the ordinance, that's another ordinance, and so you, you probably would start at that, that time, when I start the clock over again?
No.
You could amend the ordinance on the second reading, okay?
Yes.
But it sounds like regardless, you're probably two weeks if, whether they table it or do a first reading.
What is the only thing in the order, what is the thing in the ordinance that you want changed?
Well, I'll just go down the list of what I had. Based under eleven four thousand two general standards roadway system design, uh, sub three temporary turnaround of radius of at least fifty feet. That's been addressed already by the residents. That, that's not up to code. Um, I know that the roads are sixty foot wide, but that still leaves forty foot short. And I understand that. And like I said, there are ways of waiving this in through the agreement. That is allowance given to the council. You know, as it was done with sidewalks, another one was eleven four thousand two general standards roadway system design. And this is the one that I have issue with is providing at least two routes from each lot within the subdivision to the rest of the city. In the current plat, there is one access point. Um, as somebody's pointed out, that they live on that corner and getting all of that traffic through. One of the concerns that comes up with it is that phase one roads are fine, um, eight inches. Phase two, three, five inches, they're already falling apart. The impact of that with all that traffic from these...
That's a little bit of overstating. They're falling apart. They're not failing apart.
Well, they're, they're not up to the same standards as in phase one, would be a better way of saying that. And so with that, this one entrance and exit, let alone for emergency purposes, if something would happen, yours, those are all being funneled onto the lesser of the two roads in that development. So the deterioration that's already taking place in phase two and three would only accelerate rather than alleviate with there's another access to that point. Um, and the last one isn't necessarily, uh, ordinance, not compliance with the ordinance, but in looking at the plat with sanitary sewer lines, with the development on the west side, basically where it butts up to the previous development. One, there's an eight inch sanitary sewer line that runs across the drainage, you know, which Mr. Domma draw attention to that there's pretty good erosion on that. Um, and so in looking with that, I talked with John, recommended at least two foot underground with the pictures that I saw in the email, it's easily eroded more than two inches. So you have an exposed sewer line at that point as well.
Storm sewer.
Or, no, it's a sanitary sewer line.
Yeah, that, all of that's being addressed in the next phase, because those are all lots. So the, right now, that, that current erosion that he's talking about was a directional erosion by us from the second phase because we had to get the water to go somewhere, so it went that way. And it's been doing that for fifteen years or since the second phase, two thousand seven. So there is that. But that is something that is addressed in the plans and the grading plans for this next phase. That, and, and we also last night talked to, um, the gentleman worth, roots, roots, and to assure him that we would do what needs to be done to make sure that that water runoff doesn't go there.
Yeah. Well, and, and my concern was just more with the exposed sewer line if it were to get...
Can you go that way, John, with that?
If it were to get exposed and potential for any breakage, you've got an, an open sanitary sewer line going into drainage.
It's not a sewer line. It's a, it's a storm sewer, not sanitary sewer.
It's not gonna be a storm sewer.
Storm sewer.
Okay, so if I'm not sure on what page this is. On the utility plan of the plat, I'm not sure what page that's gonna be on there. It specifically states there's an existing manhole in phase one where loose stem trail is already eased. It has an easement there.
Right.
And it also has in this one, a proposed eight inch sanitary sewer main running and connecting into that existing one. So it's not a storm sewer, it's a sanitary sewer.
It is a sanitary sewer main.
And it's always been in that plan to tie in for the, that end development.
Yeah, as this development will tie into that.
Yeah.
But all those grading issues are addressed. That has to be addressed because those lots are unsellable without that being addressed. So that's, those lots currently on that west side, that's, that's part of the grading plan.
And so that's where I, I think for right now, tabling it and getting those issues addressed. I mean, for me, the main one is with the, the ordinance on the roadway system design with the two access points is still one of more of a issue that I'd like to look into further or see.
John Hughes, did you wanna add something? You, you mentioned the two access points. You had singled me. Did you wanna address that?
Seems to be a little bit of confusion here. Again, it's not the best way to say it, but we, some, section eleven point four, oh, 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 two, or, uh, Mr. Miller's pocket, but it's called circulation system design. And the circulation system design is assuming that there's a requirement for two exits in there. What we have here is what's called a local residential street. Uh, and if you look, and you can't because I'm doing it here. Provides furnished lot carries traffic, carries the least traffic at the lowest speed. East, west orientation provides best solar access. Local residential streets usually do not interconnect with adjoining neighborhoods or subdivisions. When you get to a street that is a collector or not what we call a local, uh, residential street, what I would call a local street, then, and, and actually, that's what happens in phase two. Once we get to phase two, that's connecting to another neighborhood. So we require two distinct exits from that. And item four talks about providing adequate traffic both through subdivision. And at the last sentence here, additionally, the system should be designed to discourage through traffic from using local residential streets. One exit in, one exit out is certainly a discouragement. Basically, what you're, a local residential street is there for the inhabitants of that particular neighborhood. It's not meant for people to be driving through. And again, I will say here, when we talk about locals versus residential streets, again, they say they do not interconnect with adjoining neighborhoods or subdivision. When we talk about that, what we're looking at is we have a neighborhood, and then we have another kind of a neighborhood where, for instance, there are gonna be people driving through it to get to either a school, a hospital, uh, other city amenities and whatever. This is the, the end of the world up there. There's not gonna be any more subdivisions unless they decide to go east and they have that option of going east with the dead end turn of that. So basically, um, this is a residential street. It's not required to have two exits.
Can you make, Kelly, you want that?
I could add something else to that, um, if you, if you would raise it, John, just a tad bit. There. This is what they're talking about right here that was originally there. This is Greg Damon's piece of property currently. This is Seaver's property, okay? Initially, way back when, you know, this thing was all, came forth, that street was a, a, a thought that might work for this final phase. At that point, we had no real concept for this final phase. As you can see, well, for one, I know that Seavers and Damon would really appreciate not tearing up their properties because in order to put that street in, it requires a considerable amount of adjustment to their properties. So they're opposed to it. Also, I would mention to you that coming off this street, going right here to Wildwood, which is right here, is one hundred and fifty feet. Both Wildwood, both Goldenrod go to the exact same location, and they go out either East Sewer Street over here or Down Ridge Run to East Sewer Street over here. So we're talking about a block access through properties where people would really appreciate not having to have it with streets that are wider with, you know, turnarounds right here. So I'm just saying, that's the concept that we put forth for those reasons. And I would also mention that adding this, one of the other things, going back to something I wanna reiterate, is our thought is, what are these lots gonna cost with the total infrastructure? Adding one hundred and fifty feet of street, repairing yard here and repairing yard here, adds a couple hundred thousand dollars of unnecessary, unretainable street because, uh, money, because we, we don't have any lots to sell on it. So that's another reason why we did it. Otherwise, all of this would have to absorb it. So that, that's the concept that we, that's the reason why that doesn't go through or why in this plan it doesn't show it going through. But I would add this too. If you're asking for that and you're asking for a turnaround, that's a total reconstruction of this drawing. And that is not gonna happen in two weeks. The engineer probably wouldn't get till, till June or July, or that backed up. So this project will not go.
We do have additional comments from the public.
Can I just say one thing? I've gotta go. You know, I'm sure we can work something out. All we need to do is get into the writing between web and, uh, the homeowners association. I'm confident we can do it in two weeks. So whatever else you guys think about. Now that it, thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Please step forward, stick to your address.
Um, Adam Greenquist, fifteen thirty Ridge Run. Uh, just wanna thank, uh, Web Development One for their vision because without their vision, we wouldn't have this development, and I love living out there. So it is a great place to live. I think everybody in the association is for the expansion. That being said, I think I wanna make sure it's done right. I wanna address the roundabout specifically.
The turnaround.
The turnaround, sorry. So I live on Ridge Run there, and I've got my fourth child coming here in two weeks. I think there's nineteen kids under the age of eight that live on that street. And to try to turn around there, and at the end, you gotta do about a four-point turnaround to turn around in front of Pelster's house and Wilkins' house without using the driveway. But it's not just us. Garbage trucks are driving down, and they can't turn around. So you know what they're doing? They're backing up all the way down that street in reverse. There's kids out there. We wanna see this move forward. We want it done right. I would like to, to address that on the next phase because I don't want that problem to exist again because it's a safety issue. And again, we just wanna make sure that this is done right when it moves forward, so.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Seeing no one else, I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this hearing. Uh, we do have a, a motion still to table and a second, but we can still continue discussion unless the discussion, um, is ended. So I'll ask the council again. Do you have any questions or comments on this item? Yes, Alan?
I think we have a lot of moving parts, and I've sort of lost a little track of, of who is requesting what and for what part of this development. I think I agree with Carl that just a two-week postponement to get things in writing, to clean up the agreements with the HOA, make sure that everything is happy, is probably a good idea. It's not that people don't trust anybody's word. It's just that putting it in writing is always good business for the city and for the homeowners and for the builder as well.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Seeing them, then we do have a motion. The motion is to table this item to the next council meeting. Um, and we can also work between now and then, um, and try to get the information that's been requested as well. So Kelly, do you have any questions to give? Okay. So we have a motion to table, and it's been second. Please ask your votes. Please spread the votes.
I'm in favor of Wilkins' back. Fred Smith's hand, sir.
Thank you. We'll move then on to item number eight. Consideration of approval of professional services contract with RDG. Ryan, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brian Harkin, Southeast Nebraska Department District. This is the professional services contract for the downtown master plan. This is a consultant agreement that is subject to the grant that you approved with the state of Nebraska. To give you a quick overview of the selection process, the city issued a report qualifications for professional planning and engineering firms. The city received through our office seven proposals. Our committee was put together, the selection committee was put together that included city staff, myself, Jonathan Jenkins, and downtown representatives to review and score proposals. From there, the committee shortlisted to three, did interviews, and then based on the results of the interview, it's basically making the recommendation that RDG planning and design is the consultant to do the downtown master plan. So this is the professional services contract for that. Essentially, this gives them an end date through September, which would give you time to get the plan put together and then create priorities and begin the process for phase two application.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Please.
The motion is second. The motion is second. Please ask your votes. Please spread the votes.
I'm in favor of Wilkins' back. Fred Smith's hand, sir.
Thank you. We can take a minute here if, if you're looking to have it escape without drawing too much attention. You're welcome to take this opportunity before we move on, so you don't have to listen to the bell. So you're here for the long haul. All right. Thank you, Ryan. Next, item number nine is consideration of ordinance on third and final reading vacating alley between Lincoln Street and Cedar Street and between Fourth and Fifth Streets. I think, uh, did you wanna, where you at? Yeah, did you wanna say something before we continue on this? I don't believe you were at the previous meeting, so I wanna give an opportunity.
Here at Roll four oh four Lincoln Street, I'm, I'm kinda the motivation behind this initiative. I know we've been to the planning commission, but I, for those of you that know me pretty well, you know, I'm trying to forget. I, I was lucky that I made it today because I'm working on a rocking horse that I promised this guy, the gentleman here about a year ago. And I'm surprised you don't, that's why I stole a little bit of heat. I wasn't supposed to be here for this tonight. I didn't plan on coming. I was planning on coming to do the next item, which I will be doing. But, uh, getting ready for that meeting, uh, that item, I was looking at your minutes from the last meeting, and it, it dawned on me today that, um, I want you all to make an informed decision on this. And, and, um, whatever you decide, it's fine with me. I, I'm, that's good. I, I salute and follow rules and orders and everything else. But what I wanted to do was add on to the back of my garage, which has been in existence on that alleyway. It's about a foot and a half, two feet from the property line, which is the edge of the ten-foot line that, or the fourteen-foot wide line, which you can see on your, your drawing now. If, if I wanna add on to the back of that garage, I actually have to step it in two, three, four feet to be within the, the city code. And, uh, if I move that garage, I'm gonna have to move the whole thing over. And, and I understand all that, but the, the informed decision I want you to make is one on definitions and what this thing that we call an alley right now, um, is and, and what we're getting out of it. I would ask John to define the alley as it is today.
It's an underdelt alley.
It's an underdelt alley. How wide is it?
It's fourteen foot wide. It didn't come through.
You didn't want.
So it's an undeveloped alley, which means you don't maintain it. But you have to have access to it, right? For utilities? Did you work on that power line that goes up and down? Okay. Um, at the, at the, uh, commission meeting, they had, they had questions about access, and a couple of neighbors did get up and, and voiced concerns about it, and I respect that. But if this were vacated, how wide would the alley, or the, uh, vacated structure be as far as easements go? How would you define the easement?
Well, it's, it's not just that it would be vacated, we replace the alley, the undeveloped alley with an easement a- access. It's typically what we do in a subdivision, we have two houses adjoining in the backyard, because we usually have, uh, phone cable and electric cable, you know, transformers back there. Everybody that buys a house, and so it has, depending on where they buy it, whether it's residential one or two, it'd be seven and a half feet. If it was three or four, it would be ten feet, five feet on either side. Still gonna use your property, can't put anything in a permanent nature, you could put a fence in there if it has removable panels. And so that would pretty much accomplish the same thing as far as us getting access in there. Uh, you, you wouldn't be allowed to put any structures such as utility sheds or garages or things.
Which you can't do right now, correct?
Right, you can't do that right now, because basically that's our property.
So, so as far as access goes, if, if the alley were vacated, you'd have an easement in place, I understand? It would be fourteen feet wide?
If we would vacate the alley, I would, I would recommend vacating the alley, replacing the alley with, with an utility easement.
Okay, which would be fourteen feet wide?
Which would be fourteen.
Seven feet off of the property line each way.
Seven and a half feet, seven feet on either side, if the property.
Correct. So would, uh, the city utilities have a problem with access? I, I, I defer to them, I think they're here.
Uh, one problem would be chain link fence put in, uh, all kinds of fencing, trees planted, stuff like that.
Okay.
We have to be able to get a truck down through the fourteen foot.
Can you plant trees?
No.
Any fences that would go in would have to do something that's frangible that you could take down? Kind of the, kind of the.
If this is for removal, we would take it down and not be responsible for that.
Okay. If there were anything in the alley that was constructed illegally or whatever, who would be responsible for paying for moving it? If the city had to do work to get in there?
It would be the people that are involved.
The people that own it.
The people that own the property, basically. What we would do is move it for them and send them over.
I, I, I'd ask the city council, with all due respect to my neighbors who were, uh, initially against this, I assume they still are. One of them I know had concerns, and, and I think I saw him walking in here, Jake, my good neighbor, who, I went to Alaska to go fishing this summer, so you know how good of friends we are. His concern is access. And I submit to the city council that I think the commission had this idea, based on what was said, and with, with all due respect from the electric department, that access might be a problem. And I don't see it as a problem. So we're, it's just a question of, of what this piece of ground is called, an alley? Where you have setbacks and whatnot, and guys like me who want to add on to the back of their garage? And it's not feasible for me, if I'm gonna leave my garage where it is and add to the back of it, because I want to put in, uh, a wood shop, that I have to step it back three feet. And I'm at the front edge of this alley, okay? Are you all, are you all familiar with this alley? Have you been out there and looked at it and taken a little good look at what's down the alley, two, three lots down?
Kelly, can I pass this?
There's a walnut tree. There's a walnut tree on the side of it, okay? There's a garage that's been built, that actually has building structure in it.
Myself.
Really old. I'm in violation, just like he is, he's just further in. All I'm saying is, I would like the city council to make an informed decision. It's an unapproved alley, you're not in there, nobody's driving in it. You do have, you do have access in about three lots before you run into that garage that's built back there, that might be a problem. But if the alley were vacated, I don't think, based on the easement rules that would be set in place, that access to any of that ground, all the way down to the end that's defined for utility work or for neighbors to use, uh, would go in that. And if you know me, I'm a person who likes to use some common sense, and I would hope that, uh, I don't really care. If it's done, whatever you vote on is fine, I want you to make an informed decision. I would like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? I don't, are there any questions, Sir Gary?
It doesn't look like we're going in board of adjustment.
It doesn't qualify for variance.
Why?
Because it's not a hardship that is specific to one person, it's something that could happen anywhere that we have an undeveloped, uh, alley.
Well, I remember, I remember one time when I was on the zoning board, it was that time, and we had a thing come up on Ash Street, where a guy put on a cover over his deck on the side of the house, which is on the side face of Ash Street. And we voted to grant it. And a week, so two weeks later, we got a thing in the mail, Van Ooyen sued the zoning board of adjustment because they passed. But he did, he did file within the same right number of days, and I got thrown out of court. But there were two or three people that quit at that time, on, on the board. And I, I, I just, I don't understand. I mean, if he puts it, added on to the garage, what is it gonna hurt?
Well, it's not that it's gonna hurt anything in this specific case, but what it does is it develops a precedent that anybody can do, because if we do for one, we have to do for everybody.
And I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna ask for that, sir. I'm not gonna ask for that.
And we follow strictly your methods, you know, you haven't been on the zoning board since I've been here. I think, uh, in the last twenty-two years, we've had three instances of applications for variance. Because we tell the people upfront, that it has to meet the three criteria that are set forth by stating the clause. This does not meet any of those criteria. To take it to the board of variance, it's my duty, as the person submitting it to the board, to the board of variance, you need to deny it, because that does not meet the stat- state statute. The last one being under caprice, that it has to be, uh, a hardship. Say for instance, you had some property, and the state wanted to put in a highway, such as we did up at, uh, up by the high school, and they decided to take a parcel of land, so now you've got a non-proprietary structure. That is, we could grant variances on that, because we don't have that kind of an instance happening all the time. It was not this person's fault that owned the house, it was the state that incurred it. So it's a one instance kind of deal. We have undeveloped alleys all over the city, that would set a precedent for that.
But thi- this one is, I, I don't know, I can't speak to the other ones, I, I can just speak from personal experience, and this alley is not an alley. And if you don't, if, if you doubt me, go out there and walk it. I'll bet you you can't make it to the end. So we, we have a, a thing called an alley, and all I'm trying to do is the right thing and follow the rules, and if, if the alley is vacated, then, then I don't have to ask for any waivers, and I can actually leave the, the garage lane where it is. Like I said, if you vote, if you vote no, as the planning commission has recommended, I'm, I'm fine with that too, I just want you to make an informed decision.
Thank you. Um, John, and then you're up next.
Well, my question will be to Larry again, which I asked last meeting.
Larry, can you come up to the podium? Which is not for Gary, thanks Gary. Yep, you bet.
So with our new Altech portable pole mover?
Right.
Can you get down fourteen feet with no problem?
Yes, we can. The south end of this alley, to move the trailers and the garbage cans and those, whatever stored there and junk, we can get down that south end.
With our new portable?
Yeah, with a big truck.
Even with a big truck, okay.
Yes, and that's, them poles will be, be replaced in the near future. Overhead lines, telephone and cables, also have lines in there.
So my next question, then, to John, and we, we, we talked about this last meeting, and we said we couldn't get to it because it was gonna be too much of a heartache. So whose responsibility is to move it if they can get down there?
To move structures?
Yes. If they're not in compliance with the city code, whose responsibility?
Uh, we can send them letters.
Okay. I think part of the issue is the, a timing issue of, if they need to be, if you need to get down there tomorrow?
If we lose a transformer, no lightning storm, there's fences there, and trailers and everything, you gotta, you know, and gardens, and there's a extension on the garage, there's rock, rocks, decorative stones through there.
So we allow homeowners to, uh, not be in accordance with our city code?
I think you're just talking about people placing things in easements.
Right.
Happens all the time.
I don't, no, but I was.
But, and yes, the homeowner would be responsible for getting it out of the easement, and, and the city would move whatever obstruction in the easement out of the way, and send a homeowner bill.
Right, so I, that's what I wanted to point clear.
That would all have to be done before the transformer got replaced.
Right, right, so I'm just saying. I just want to make a point clear that you can get your new portable?
Oh yeah, easy, downloading down through there, not between the houses, but from the south end.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the homeowner would be responsible to ensure that, um, they would occur all costs.
But there's a, I mean, again, it's the timing
Right.
of something happening right now, and having to deal with decorative rocks and everything else, that
Swing sets.
Swing sets, those, they, they can be moved, and yes, we could send a bill, and I'll guarantee they pay the bill, but it's just more of an ease, and it's more of, of the ease of trying to address an issue, because while he's moving a swing set, someone doesn't have power in the house. So I think that's part of the concern, right, Larry?
Yes, yes.
So you want to be able to address the emergency at that time? Yeah, I, I had Dick first, and then Chris.
Oh, why is the utility easement?
What'd you say, typically, fourteen?
The alley's fourteen, and all the poles are on the west side of that easement.
Okay, so if you vacated the alley, does that take out the utility easement?
We still have, have a utility easement through.
Well then, if we, if we voted to vacate the alley, then what's the?
Them fences are gonna still be there and all that.
Right, but it'll still have, but it's not gonna.
It's not gonna change it.
Not gonna change it.
No.
Go on.
Kelly, is there any, Kelly, is there any, from a practical standpoint, as far as the difference between owning this and having an easement for this alley? I mean, where, I mean, for the city's standpoint, other than owning it and not owning it?
Uh, I think it just goes back down to, to access, you talked about the practical issues here.
Chris, did you want to add something?
I was gonna question, you know, wh- whether it remains an alley or we vacated, and it's nothing but an easement, the impediments you have there are being created every day anyway, because it's not an actively used alley. So I, I don't see where vacating this, leaving, obviously, the utility easement in place, cha- doesn't, doesn't change it from us leaving it as an alley versus, but, you know, vacating it, because the, the residents there are already doing what they're doing, because it's not an active alley. I mean, it's grass. Nobody drives up and down that alley, I don't even know if you can get out at the north end. Is there an exit at the north end?
No.
So it's not really an alley. It's, it's an alley by code definition at some point, but it's not, it may be seventy, eighty years ago, some of that went straight through.
It's an alley that got given to the city through dedication of the past.
Hey Kelly, as far as, like, who maintains the, the easement?
Well, it's vacated at that point, so it's up to the homeowners to do what they want with that. That becomes, when it becomes vacated, that becomes the homeowner's land. It would be their responsibility, they could do what they want with it.
Okay.
Subject to the easement. Now, they could plant their gardens in that area, but they run the risk of being tilled up for repairs to the easement.
Okay. John, then I do, you wanted to comment too?
Typically, what we have here, and I, I didn't tell them about the jog, in fact, I wouldn't hear, I believe they had to stand in that. But what we have, if you were going to pull into, from an alley into a garage, so that the garage door is facing the alley, we require that five-foot setback. In this particular instance, we have an alley there, and we have a garage in existence, it's not gonna use the alley to pull in. I don't know if there would be a heartburn with extending the garage down without the five-foot setback on the extension.
So you're saying not, you're saying not to vacate it, just allow the extended, extended walk?
Well, that might be something that we could take in front of the board of areas.
Even though it doesn't meet the conditions for the area?
Well, I'm reaching for some.
Did you want to come up and state your name and address?
Jake Colonic, six thirty-three North Fourth, Gary's neighbor, not one of the squatters that have taken over the, uh, easement. The only issue that I've got with the, the situation of going vacant, that it does become our property, it does become our taxes on property we can't use. And on some of the elderly people down the hill, they have done retaining laws and everything else, they can't maintain that, don't want it. And the garden behind my house, obviously, I'm not taking it away from that gouty old guy, you know, but that's the biggest thing that I've got, is, is if you do a vacate, it becomes my cost, my issue, which Gary and I have maintained that back there for years, he's maintained his property, he's done a great job with his house, his garage got into issue. I like to have the easement, so I can gain access to my property, uh, so I can do work in that this summer as well. It's just the vacate issue, I don't want to go that far, where it now becomes everybody down the blocks.
Yeah, the, the homeowners could all get together and create a private roadway. But I doubt they want to do that either.
You don't, you don't want to drive down there, like Gary said, so. You know, where his garage is at, I have no issue with that, I have no issue with him building that on that line. The vacate came up due to the fact that he is on the easement, but, you know, it doesn't affect me where he builds his garage, as long as that easement doesn't get shut down or doesn't start becoming my cost. Because I'll never move my fence into that, because that becomes a burden on me when I get a phone call from the city that I've gotta take it down. And, sorry, but removable fences don't work. They, they just don't. First brainstorm out there fixing it, so, just my two cents.
Thank you. So at this point, I, we have the third reading on this, so I'll go ahead and do the third reading, unless you have other comments. In order to provide for the closing and vacating of the remaining portion of the north-south, north-south alleyway located between Fourth Street and Fifth Street, and Lincoln Street, beginning at the southwest property line of Lot Nine, Crowbridge Replat of Woods subdivision, and the southeast property line of Tax Lot One sixty-five, continuing north approximately five hundred and ten feet to the northwest property line of Lot Three of Crowbridge Replat of Woods subdivision, and the northeast property line of To- Tax Lot Two seventy-two, the same being a partially established and platted alley within the city, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. So, all right, this is ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero two. We've already done the three readings, so this is actually on the ordinance, so we're clear. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read? Is there no motion? Seeing no motion, this fails for a motion. All right. So that concludes item number nine. Item number ten. Discussion and consideration of request of First Impressions Working Group for a city land use for installation of welcome sign on north side of East Highway Thirty-four. This is the First Impressions Committee, and Gary, did you want to address this as well?
As long as they'll have me, I'm the acting, uh, secretary chair of the First Impressions Working Group. They're, it's a group that's been around, uh, for more than a decade, I'm sure. Uh, I've been involved with it since shortly after moving here, six years ago, uh, representing, uh, Kettlebank. They're nice enough to let me off during the, uh, for an hour, hour and a half, once a month, to conduct these meetings. The group is a no-budget group, we're part of the, the, the old chamber, now the new SECVP. And Bud Jonathan made it tonight, good, thank you. They, they, they come up with projects to beautify the town and provide a good first impression for the. They, they, they come up with projects to beautify the town and provide a good first impression for those folks that are visiting and also for the folks that live here, just to, just to make it nice. The mouse, the, the historical marker down across from the parade of flags was built, I think by Lael Mueller. The parade of flags, as you know, was a big, big success. We started that and then Kowanis took it over. And by the way, Clarence Water here is here to answer all the hard questions, he's on our, he's on our group too. And he's one of the primary instigators of getting the parade of flags done. So if he's behind this, you can count on me to tell you that, um, that it's gonna be a quality project wherever it ends up being. And that's this welcome to Seward sign. Wanted to say, make a statement that, uh, basically said use arrives somewhere special. And I, I, I think we have a, a pretty close design that you can see in your packages. The question is location. You all have a, a summary sheet in front of you that kinda gives you the history, so I'm not gonna go into details on, on all this justification. Larry is here, he can answer city electric questions if you have any. But, uh, the question is, and, and we talked about this at a previous council meeting and it's been on the back burner now until tonight when now we're ready again. Will the city allow the, the First Impressions Group to use land that the city owns down there just west of the old John Deere building and east of the parade of flags? The reason that selects, that ground was selected, we went up and down the highway, all the way in or east toward Lincoln, probably three or four miles. And the question is, how far, how close do you wanna be before you're too close? And how far away do you wanna be before you're too far away? There's no real good answer to that. Just to belabor the point a little bit, if you'll allow me. The folks that designed Stapleton Airport in Denver, when they built Stapleton, it's right downtown, they thought it was too far from town, a lot of people thought it was too far from town. Okay, so, so the question of being too close to town, it's all relative, it's always gonna change. This is a perfect location. As you're coming into town from, from Lincoln, the road starts to bend. You're going down the hill, here comes the John Deere buil- building. You don't see the parade of flags yet, but you will see this welcome to Seward sign for about three or four seconds doing a speed limit. And then you'll have the aha effect, what we call the aha effect, where all of a sudden, boom, there's the parade of flags too. It, it's, it's a one-two punch and it impacted, if you drive it, you'll know what I'm talking about. The sign will be lit, but right now we have, uh, folks in Norfolk that have designed it and given us a price on what they think it'll cost. It'll be backlit, it'll be about seventeen, eighteen feet tall. It'll be blue, which, with white lettering behind it. And we're told that that's a, a pretty dramatic, uh, color combination that gets your attention. And the blue is, is neat because it, it's patriotic, but it's also this sort of blue day color, pretty close to it, so. It, it's about, I went out and measured it tonight after work. From where we wanna put it, it's at least a hundred feet, maybe a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty feet from the edge of the highway. So we don't have a, a highway right-of-way issue that I know of, I think the, the, their, their magic dimension is sixty feet off of, of the highway center line. So we don't have a state of highway, state highway issue. It's purely city land, so whether or not we can get electricity and approval from, from you all to provide that electricity and, uh, and get on with designing and getting this thing built. I've shown you on the paper that we have a plan on how to do all that, we're hoping to get it done by the beginning of this year. Fund rating is not gonna commence until we have a place to build this thing, so I'm hoping for questions.
I know this is, we've had this discussion two times already and it's denied, been denied two times. Because, you know, one of the things that was brought up is, um, location. And, you know, why are we going to have other parts of the town be out of being recognized that you're in Seward? Um, where we're gonna be put in, you know, Evergreen already is there and you're already being already passed to, to the west to Evergreen. You go to the west side of Seward, um, what do you see when you hit the welcome to Seward sign? Is there any houses there yet? No. Um, so you're getting recognized before you come into town that you're approaching the city of Seward. If you go on any side of the, the, the city, you're getting, you're, you're not having anything until after the sign. So why would we do that coming into, uh, you know, the west side there? That's my question. And the sign that we have up there now, um, that was put in by Dave Avery, uh, was the one that designed it. Very nice sign, same way on the west side of Seward, very nice sign. And I asked, uh, I asked, you know, to, why can't we try to get, uh, approval to put that somewhere else? You know, further, uh, you know, up the hills, you know, about where the sign is now. You know, I asked, you know, why didn't you go see Davy Jones and see if he would give, uh, some right-of-way there on his side? Did anybody even do that? No, nobody has done that. Because I've asked the questions. You know, so why didn't we do those extra steps before the third time that we've asked this? That's my question. So we didn't do what we asked the first time, the second time, and we're here again the third time.
I can comment on that.
Clarence, can you come up to the podium and just for our record, state your name and address, please? Thank you.
Hundred twenty, two thirty-five, Lincoln Green. That was brought up at that meeting that I was at, and at the time there was gonna be somebody from the council who should check it.
And I did.
I heard back that they checked with the state and they have no record of that sign being up there. There's no record, we'd have to start from scratch. Also, the landowner changed and I heard that he didn't know that that was even part of his property. The other, the third thing and one of the big reasons also is, we would have to be billed by REA every month for lighting on that. But down here, basically, there's no charge. Because once you get out of Seward Electric Department, you're into REA and they aren't gonna give it to us for nothing. You know, I'd have a transformer and, uh, go onto the highway and what have you. Now, we'd also have to, if we went more than a mile or so, even no matter what, we would have to have, buy property. You know, that's, that's a problem we're having south, we've been, I would say, a good ten years trying to get a sign south of town. And nobody will give us property. These are some of the reasons. John?
I, I just, you know, you know, I don't wanna take this recognition from taxpaying citizens. You know, I would like the people to, you know, you know, I don't want to see them coming into the city of Seward already and you're not, you're not getting recognized that you're in Seward. And, you know, where the sign is right now, going up the hill, nice sign, very good visual, Fourth of July city. You see it before you even hit any residents. And this here, you're not. And, and that's my, my very, it's, it's my disappointment on this where we're placing it. And then what, you know, and then the other thing is, is what's gonna develop there, because that ain't John Deere anymore. That place is for sale. What kind of development's gonna be there? And when are you gonna be able to stop any, you know, visual issues as well there? Because like I said, it is for sale. You know, I just, I said, did we look at all our opportunities? Did we look at all our options? Did we talk to everybody? You know, and we hear, yes, we hear, we hear, we say that, but.
Well, we could do one thing, but we'd have to be approved for the sign, but we'd go out and start asking somebody to buy their property. You know, would, would they, you know, nobody's authorized to do that.
I mean, to me, that's where you as a community, uh, organization, why aren't you doing that? And then come back to the city? Or maybe go to the foundation?
I would, I would.
This would be a perfect opportunity to take it to the foundation, which Clarence, you know how the foundation works. And the, these are types of projects that the foundation possibly can support. And they might, I, they might, I can't say they will, might give you money to move forward on a project like this. And I haven't seen no application go to the foundation.